We've got Rich, got all our counselors. I'm going to call this work session to order. And then I'll just do a quick review of our city council meeting agenda for the evening in case there are any questions for staff that you can prep before we get into it. I don't believe there should be. We have our city council meeting minutes from September nineteenth on our consent agenda. And then under resolutions, we have the public hearing for the temporary moratorium on developments with sewer connections. And then we have under old business to Sandy clean water update. Any questions before we proceed to our work session? All right, great. With that, let's get into discussion on our twenty twenty-three legislative priorities. Jordan, I'll let you kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll kick this off. What we want to do is bring the council together for a work session to discuss our funding priorities. As we head into another legislative session, which is the long session this year. First of all, the council, this council and the mayor have done, have a great track record over the last couple of years of lobbying for and receiving state and federal funding for our high priority projects. And so it definitely deserves recognition and kudos to the council for their advocacy for Sandy. And what we're trying to do is get in front of this legislative session to continue that success, continue to tell our story about Sandy as a small growing community that faces unprecedented capital projects for our water and wastewater systems in particular, but also wanted to have a conversation with the council if there's other priorities that we should look for in this session. I know the mayor and counselors have some keen knowledge on sort of the bills that may be coming up this year and sort of that process now of how, you know, local priorities get funded through Christmas tree bills, lottery fund bills and things like that. And I think given those challenges that we're still facing with the the large dollar amounts that are required for investing in our wastewater and water projects that that would be obviously the place to start to continue that success of receiving state funding and trying to go out and get some more. And but like I said, there's other projects that we've seen cities get funded through through bills from the legislature. And there may be something that the council wants to discuss that all these master plans that we're developing and also master plans that we do have on the shelves could be brought out to seek funding for. But, you know, I I think what we've done in the last couple of years is really tell the story of the sewer project. And what we're trying to do now is also start telling the story of our water project that has an equal aggressive timeframe to be in compliance for the Bull Run water source, but also invest in our Alder Creek Water Treatment Plant reservoirs and other facilities in our water system. That's also a very expensive project and we've submitted for an SRF loan so far for those two components of the project, both the pipeline to the filtration plant, but also our own facilities. But we know we're going to need more than that to really try to keep the rates as low as possible for our rate pairs here in Sandy. So I really, that's a work session. We wanted to start the dialogue to kind of talk about these priorities, how to position for asking for more state funding for these projects and other ideas that the council may have. And as you recall from last year, we did engage with the government affairs consultant that helped us during the short session. And we since ended that relationship, but it may be something the council might want to revisit for the long session for a limited term basis, maybe with another firm. We had interviewed a couple as part of that process a year and a half ago. We may want to go back and see if they would still be interested. You know, by timeline, we probably can turn around a quick RFP to get, you know, drum up more interest to see if we could get help to lobby for our interest. But we also have some very practiced city counselors and a mayor that know how to work the halls and engage with our representatives. And final, final point that you may want to discuss is we will be represented by new, a new state rep and senator. So something that can kind of consider as we head into this new session that until, well, about a month from now, we may not know. We don't know yet. We can kind of read the polls or tea leads, but we will be represented by someone new that we would have to bring them up to speed of Sandy's needs and and our wants.
Thank you for that, Jordan. I guess I'll, I'll, I'll start with just kind of that last part, obviously not too much. Really any advocacy towards our House and Senate members should probably happen until after the election season's over. But with that said, to George's point, we do have a new state senator and a new House member. Those folks really are our champions for the projects, really kind of our boots on the ground there, our representatives, our senators. And so I just want to start with whatever direction we go as a council here tonight. I think it's just imperative that shortly after the election, kind of on our, the calendar first team at that city hall that reach out to those folks. They kind of get them in, update them on what George told us about kind of the Sandy story and and our projects, really what are, whatever the decision is, we come up with collectively as a council, kind of what our legislative priorities are. And I mean, heck, it could even be a, a, a work session or something where we maybe bring those folks in and have collectively have a conversation with those folks about what we want to achieve on the legislative session. So just wanted to start there. With that, just kind of guide our conversation. I know Jordan talked about wastewater. We've got water infrastructure. We have, you know, Sandy Community Campus and some parks and recreation types projects are goals for what we're trying to accomplish. I know back pre-COVID and a lot of the successes that George is talking about of going out and getting money. I know a bunch of us kind of had a conversation, always think about, we were in the car riding over as a group to the Capitol in Salem about what we're going to do. And Carl was all excited. You could just imagine, picture it, right? He's like, I need to talk to these guys about this, this, this and this. And we, as a group, kind of, we had a conversation, said, yeah, but at the end of the day, we're still saying, right? And so we've got to really target what our ask is and to make sure that we're all kind of, you know, we're, we're, we're singing to the same lyrics. And we're really focused on what that ask is so that it's top of mind and what we're asking for is not falling through the cracks. So I would kind of remind us, we probably want one, maybe two things that we're putting in front of these folks. Yeah.
Last time we talked about this, when we had our consultant here, we talked about having that big ask and then maybe a couple of smaller ones tucked away because of
Yep.
different buckets of money that might, so.
Yep.
I didn't want to keep that in mind.
That's where I'm at too. Yeah.
I'd also, in that respect, keeping a big picture at the moment is if we do interrelated so that we don't end up in a lot of diverse kind of asks or maybe too very far apart from each other's tasks, but maybe something that builds on that, the bigger ask.
But the big ask, I don't know what you guys think. I assume it's going to be wastewater.
I think we have two big asks.
Okay.
The water is another one. Yeah. So I mean, I think, you know, those are
Kind of the have tos.
The have tos, right? The have tos, and they're both very expensive and, you know, stuff that we don't want to just saddle on the backs of taxpayers. So to me, those are the two big ones and they definitely be the priority.
I agree. I think infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. For me, it's always been infrastructure, but this is the biggest in our city. This is the biggest thing we've been dealing with. And to keep the momentum going, the players on their side have changed. I think that's going to be more of the challenge of bringing back our story to the new players when they come in and how we communicate with that. I think I do, you know, think, you know, with Donna and Sam, we've talked about before for our consultants, having a couple of projects on the backside of it, but not lose focus of wastewater. Don't lose focus on the clean water, maybe it's infrastructure, maybe it's community campus, what we've had in the past, whatever it may be. But, but really the focus being on the wastewater.
Well, and I tend to believe we can get aggressive with wastewater this time, especially with kind of what we're meeting about later on. It's going to really, you know, bring some attention and focus kind of what's going on in our community and something that I think people will feel the need to want to address or resolve in a pretty quick, you know, amount of time. So, you know, it's, it's, and believe me, I know, I know none of us go into the conversation later today with, you know, later this evening with, you know, easily. But that does also make the case, right? As to why we need this funding and we need it immediately and the amount of money that we need to ask for. So wastewater, number one. Freshwater, kind of number two.
Yeah.
And then do we have a, do we have any kind of third kind of little deal? Yeah.
I'd be a little curious about how Jenny felt about, you know, that order of things. I mean, it seems like we don't have complete numbers yet on the water part of that. Do you feel like those priorities are something we can take forward, carry forward?
You can come up.
You're prepared to be put on the spot, right?
Well, the way I think about it is the wastewater has received a lot of attention and made an awful lot of progress in the last three years. And we are mostly due to the pandemic and slowdowns that affected permitting, government agencies, consultants, everybody around. We are, we're behind with our water project, our, our master plan, and we're also facing deadlines that aren't being extended for the bilateral compliance. So in my mind, I, I would say the water comes first at this point. We have fresh water. Thank you. Drinking water.
Are you ready for, and sorry to interrupt, are you ready for that ask? Because I mean, we've, I mean, you have a, you know exactly what you want to ask for and how much and where it would go.
Yes.
That's awesome. So what is that? Bigly, from a thirty thousand foot level.
What, the total cost of the program?
No, no, but like what, you, when we go to like Capitol Construction Committee, you know, at, in a legislative session, we're going to have to come forward with, you know, how much money we need, exactly where it's going to go, some sort of facilities plan that's going into. Like, that's where my question comes into is like, are we to a, are we to a place where we can really dotterize across our t's and make a strong ask to the legislature?
Yeah. So our, our master plan should be coming in mid-November. What I see is there's a lot of age-related condition as well as reliability improvements, especially after the exercise we just went through for the Public Safety Power Shot Off where, I mean, Mount Hood was the first one turned off at two thirty AM on Friday and the last one turned on. And that was our drinking water, our drinking water communications, our reservoirs, and our staff were the ones running around topping up generators there. It seems to me there's, there's just a whole pool of resiliency funding out there and our drinking water system is going to keep being tested for that. And yeah, I'm moving forward. If we can secure the funding, my plan, which, which we've applied for, my plan is to start getting an RFP out for the Alder Creek drinking water redesign out on the street in January to keep these deadlines. I mean, just moving right ahead. We also want to move ahead with a, with a fix to the Sandercock Reservoir.
I, I think I'm going to switch my, my order because Jenny's reminded me, she did present a plan a while back that had all these improvements and obviously facilities up to the master plan coming in. If we don't get any additional funding or grants, we factor them into the, our rates granted their way above where we want, but they're already factored in. We don't have a plan for freshwater hall at this point, so I'd probably switch the priority. Okay?
So Jenny, what is, okay, call you Jenny. In this formal, in terms of the budgets, and I know you don't ready to give me a dollar figure, but is the water going to be something less than what left over for the wastewater treatment plant, the drinking water? Is it the same level of ask for a larger budget? They both going to be in the same ballpark? What are you thinking?
At this point, the water is less. The water was around eighty-eight million for the entire program. Wastewater is more, but we do have the ARPA grant of fourteen point seven. We also have the one million congressionally appointed grant from the EPA. So I would definitely be looking to target brick grants and other resiliency related infrastructure improvements for drinking water, which we haven't done yet.
So the remainder of the wastewater is same as what the drinking water is, or they're still quite a bit larger than?
The wastewater is larger than drinking water.
The remaining of what we need to go after.
Yes.
Wastewater is larger than drinking.
Yes, it is.
Could we treat it as a, as an equal purse? Couldn't we do a one and one? I mean, because they're going to, yeah, because they're both very important. They're both huge infrastructure. And then, you know, I, I feel like there's not really knowing what's coming down the pipe in the words or in the long session, but I feel like we can apply for different pools of money.
That's right.
Because there's going to be, you're going to have emergency management, you're going to have a lot of other factors that fall into clean water. And that's going to be a totally different pool of money than, than going after wastewater. So I mean, I, I would argue that we go after them equally, but.
I think that's.
Yeah.
And my question kind of fell to with the water stuff, all the, it, it seems like we have urgent needs where with Bull Run system, we have to get connected to that. So there's not, you know, there's an urgency that we have to kind of get onto that and we have to deal with the thing that we're going to talk about later with the wastewater stuff. So those two urgent have tos would seem like, what's the cost on the whole Bull Run thing? I kind of forget on the hookups.
It's, I just, no, 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 no. I haven't, I, I just submitted SRF loans two weeks ago. I think Alder Creek was around forty-five million and I think the pipeline, as well as some various improvements to our reservoirs, was around forty-three million. Hopefully my math adds up. The total is about eighty-eight million escalated with heavy contingencies. But just the drinking water, the, the condition-related improvements, we went out to Brownell Springs and that's what, a hundred years old. There's, it, it's time to put some money into our drinking water system so it remains reliable and, and safe for all of us.
One thing I would say is there's a significant amount of more work we need to do to tell that story than the wastewater one. Because, you know, we're, we're several sessions in now and in, in dialogue with, you know, committee administrators. I mean, people are just, we're Sandy. You guys know why we're here. You know, we got a wastewater problem. And so that's, I mean, it's just very top of mind. That said, I mean, where did we start the conversation, right? We have a new House member, we have a new Senate member, you know, new governorship. So there's, I mean, you know, this would be a time to introduce a new story, you know, and, and get that on the radar screen. So.
That's a great point.
But I can't, I can't imagine we're going to get more of the two big things. So I mean, that, that feels to me like our focus.
And then I think the small stuff, we've got just a whole bundle of smaller projects we could take on or do from
Yeah.
To whatever.
My, my big message I would have on that is, is having been in a lot of these kind of pitches, you know, with, is I sat there and gone in with different cities and, you know, and I, I just see the, the representative or the staff member saying they're going, okay, these are all a bunch of great things going on, you know, but then they leave and there's no like, this is what they need, you know? And sometimes they just want you to come in and say, this is what I need. This is what I needed to work on, you know? And so we do, it feels even really.
Bring in two jars, one, yeah, from Brownell Springs, one from the sewer treatment.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Last topic is representation. So we kind of went with, we went with PacWest last time. Just a quick reminder. Who was, who was the interview panel on, on that? Raise your hand. It was you two. Yes, I feel that you were on there too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we had two interview. We went with PacWest. And it kind of the choice between the two, I mean, you guys sat through it, but I feel like we kind of went resources, bigger shop versus kind of smaller shop with less resources. Is there maybe a feeling that we got lost in the shop? What the bigger shop? And maybe we went a wrong way where we could be the big fish in a smaller shop? Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. Jordan, what are you, what are you, what are your thoughts on that? You were dealing, you guys were dealing with them. We're just getting emails, so.
Yeah, that, that's part of it. There, I mean, if, if the other firm, I think Nellie Ry was still interested, we can give her a call. You know, you probably, it's probably more boutique, you know, and, and more tailored to what our needs would be. I think the experience of the council and now staff here over a couple of sessions, we've learned to kind of, what the process is and what forms. I think a lot of it will be the relationship building at the beginning, like we, like we, we've talked about. No matter, I think it's a matter of what's the added value of bringing someone on. And I think similar to what we were looking for with PacWest was adding capacity to, you know, staff and the council to have somebody there physically. You know, advocating for our needs, letting them hear our story, getting in front and also letting us know when those opportunities come before it's too late, right? Because water versus wastewater versus parks, different bills will be floated out there on committees and we need to get in there really quick. And so having these things in the pipeline is good, but having somebody on the ground that's able to like, give us an alert so that we're ahead before we get behind.
I think that's really important because having that kind of personal contact and since we do have two new, you know, representatives, Senate and Representative. It's really going to be important to kind of reach out personally to those people and, and not have us get lost in.
Hey, I'm concerned because of the timing, the, this is not a good time to make a change, but I'm not happy with what we're getting.
But we've already, they're already gone.
They're already, they're already gone. So we don't have anybody on place.
That's the thing. Thank you. Yeah. So now we're just, yeah.
Now we're behind the ball.
Yeah, yeah, right. So that's kind of like, the, the kind of question is to, to being behind the ball. That's kind of why it was maybe not as clear as posed it that way. As if, I have working relationships with both firms from just past lives and I, 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 I feel comfortable both in what I like about both. They're both are highly respected by both sides, you know, of the aisle, you know? If, I'm just curious if there's a comfort level of kind of moving with someone that we already knew, we could do that. Or we could go out to an RFP or if we didn't like having what we are doing, we don't have to do either. It's just.
Can we do an RFP? And have them spun up?
I have to like the staff.
I'd feel okay. I'd feel okay. I'd let you guys chime in because we all three saw on the panel. I mean, I, I would feel okay reaching out to the other contractor and just seeing if they have enough room. If they're interested. I, I thought both had really good interviews. It's the one that we went through seemed a little bit more of a powerhouse. And I think that was why we kind of went with them. So, and obviously maybe there are too much of the powerhouse, not showing up for the report. It's kind of weird. Yeah. Disappointing.
I got the impression that we didn't really, or they didn't listen very well about what we were really looking for. Like, I got a lot of feedback. I got a lot of letters to my inbox and stuff. I didn't really get anything that I thought we were after, which was get some things in front of some of the legislators. And if we need to do that this time, it's a smaller company, I think we need to do that. Must be specific.
Well, I think it's important that we have, that we do have one, for sure.
Yes, I agree. I think it's super important. We have one. Being on a committee there, it wasn't very long ago. I'd be comfortable in reaching out, seeing what the person's honest opinion of their workload. And I, I think it would, you know, just to give it a little bit of, kind of throwing it in the bus, it's just a weird type of people's careers through COVID and trying to do this remotely and, and all these other things that they, they were trying to do as well as, as we and everybody else. So that may be different if it went, you know, five years ago. And there was a short session and everything else and mix of that as well. So this is going into the long session. I think we need to be quick about it because in a month, we'll, who's sitting in those seats and there's going to be not just us, there's going to be a lot of bigger fish out there. It's going to be the same thing.
We'll reach out.
Please do. Yeah. All right. It's like I covered the topics. Yeah. All right. Well, we didn't need the full hour anyways, you guys. So we'll go ahead and enter the work session and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock. All right. Let's call the Sandy City Council meeting to order. Yeah. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. So we will, we are convening our city council meeting. I always start with a quick review of tonight's agenda. Tonight in our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from September nineteenth. Under resolutions, we have a public hearing, temporary moratorium on developments with sewer, new sewer connections. And then under old business, we have the Sandy Clean Waters Update Council. We do have an executive session after we adjourn this evening. One thing I did want to let everybody here know is so there's two opportunities for public comment. There's at the very beginning of the meeting here, pretty shortly, I'll be calling for public comment. That will be for all and any items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you are here, as I suspect many of you are, to testify on the temporary moratorium for new sewer line connections, that will need to take place within the hearing that's on the agenda. So when I go to public comment, we'll have a couple of individuals that have already signed up that will come and give testimony. Then we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which will be the hearing. And then there will be an opportunity in that process for comment at that time, just so that we all know. Feel free to ask any questions as we move on. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pizza.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Yeah.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Plowin.
Here. Is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing then, we will go to public comment. Again, please note, there's an opportunity for testimony on resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four that will occur right after this. With that said, if you're here and have signed up, I will call Hollis to give public testimony. Reminder, you have three minutes and please provide your name and address.
I'll call us, McLean Winslow, four six five seven five Southeast Chadney Road, Sandy, Oregon. All right. I wrote it down so I can keep it brief. I'm here today in response to the council's decision to forestall the implementation of the use of psilocybin in Sandy for another two years. For those of you who don't know me, let me introduce myself. My husband, Dave Wenzel, and I are both licensed mental health providers. We both have held our respective licenses for over thirty years each. He is an LPC. I am an LMFT. He taught at Western Seminary for over twenty-two years. I was the former director of the Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce. And I've been sitting on the Sandy Planning Commission for over seven years now. We are dedicated to this community and hardly the people you would expect promote a harmful drug. It's understandable that some of, some folks feel cautious about embracing psilocybin, a derivative of what was called in the nineteen sixties, the magic mushrooms. In appreciation of that caution, I feel compelled, compelled to share with you what I've been learning over the past couple of years in my work as a licensed Oregon mental health professional. One of the most, one of the most common objections to psilocybin is that it is a Schedule One drug placed there in nineteen seventy during the Nixon administration and the passage of the Controlled Substance Act, CSA. Other drugs, other Schedule One drugs include LSD and heroin. As such, caution for psilocybin would be natural. Three important points about the CSA in nineteen seventy. First, the bill was passed over fifty-two years ago and is in dire need of updating and revision. Schedule One drugs have two factors. First, high potential for abuse and second, no medicinal value. Psilocybin has neither. In nineteen seventy, we had such limited knowledge of these drugs that oxycodone and cocaine, which have been catastrophic, were made Schedule Two drugs. In fact, five decades of research has proven that psilocybin has no addictive qualities, while oxycodone and cocaine have ruined many lives. The second factor is medicinal value, and this is what I want to share most significantly. Johns Hopkins, one of the most well-known research institutes in the world, has put over seventeen million dollars into this research. So of the medical value of psilocybin. Other research institutes include UCLA, Stanford, New York University. And in our own backyard, OHSU is, is a training facility. In controlled medical studies, psilocybin has shown to seriously reduce previously untreatable depression, anxiety, assist in relieving the effects of PTSD in veterans, and reduce fear of dying in terminally ill cancer patients.
Twenty seconds.
John Hopkins is currently completing their final phase of human trials. Many of our clients in the Sandy community who suffer from depression and trauma stand to benefit from psilocybin. Oregon has adopted rules for safe use of psilocybin administered by, in monitored settings by trained personnel. Oregon voters approved its use in twenty twenty. Let's not postpone access. We urge the city council and the citizens it represents to move past the information that's over fifty-two years old to the current research that is being conducted and has been done. So many of our suffering citizens, citizens are hoping for relief. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Juan, welcome. Remember, state your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Yeah, Juan Luna. I come in from Estacara and I, I was here last meeting in the nineteen. And I tried to expose you everything's what's happened to my. business and regardless, Free Meyer event we have for uh, Chile Festival, Rosedale Chile Festival. And I asked him for a question and I had no answers. So please, I sent, the only thing I have was an email from this for this guy calls this Tyler, I guess. And then send them an email, and it was totally unexpected email I had for him. And it's not exactly what I asked him for. And then send me email. He sent it to me. He said, if I have any more questions, please contact him again. I tried contact. He's no answer. I sent another email to you, Mr. Simple. And I had no answer either. So I just wondered, please, you guys can really take it this much seriously, or you're not gonna be taken seriously. Because my business is hard for you guys. You guys kicked me out and this back. And after you guys kicked me out, this is a proof that was on Facebook, and it was a lead after I talked to Mr. Jeff. So it's not only affecting me, but it's gonna be affecting more businesses coming in the future. Because that ordinance you have, I believe, is discriminatory. Because I had license. And I I should be able to do events, anything, as long as it's a private party. And I believe I was in a private party. And I was known in the street by the, by the Sandy Limits. I wasn't a private party, and then let me finish. So please, I need you guys, please take it this seriously. Because my business is hurt because of you guys. Can I give it this to you?
Sure, sir.
Yep.
This is a proof was Facebook. You guys still looking?
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Is there any other signups for public uh comment, either here or online? Jeff?
No, Mayor, there were none.
Uh, sir, uh, I believe you want to testify about the moratorium? Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm the.
I have a double thing here. Okay, please. Okay. We'll use a mark. Remember, three minutes. I remember state your name.
My name is David Carter. I live on this is the drive. Thank you. First, um, I think Mac Evan is building some homes on that street. We have a lot of traffic on that street right now. We have uh big construction trucks. We have semis with cats on going up and down the street. And the um what do they call the buffer on the side, the shoulder, is impassable in a lot of places. On the west end of town, we have the apartments. We have people walking their baby carriages up there. We have kids riding around. I called about a month ago and asked Public Works to come with. They got a machine that would just chop out the trees and everything and open it up. And I gave, you know, it's been a month or so, and I thought, well, maybe I'll come down here and stir the pot just a little bit, see if we can get it done. But there needs to be a shoulder to walk on this to move right now. It's always been a problem down at the west end because there's cars parked right up to the street. Cars come in, you gotta wash your equipment walking that way. So I'd like to see him come by. Just cut down the brush, make the shoulders accessible. We have one piece of property that has, what do they call it, pit run rocks right up to the blacktop. So you, there's no way you're gonna get over on that one. I think Code Enforcement can take a look at that. So if you guys will do that, I'll get off your back.
All right. Well, thank you. It's a safety. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Were there any comments that needed a response from the last meeting?
Uh, Mayor, the only thing I would respond to regarding Mr. Luna. One apology that the letter that we had sent him by mail came back as undeliverable, so then we did follow up with an email explanation that we could not compensate him for the loss of business that day because, you know, he was noncompliant with our city code, and we informed the property owner about that. Um, and again, our apologies about the loss of business. Um, but you know, again, we're, you know, accountable to uphold the city code, which does not allow those type of food trucks in the city of Sandy. Um, and then, you know, our apologies about that situation, um, and how, you know, we ultimately had to enforce our code and, um, you know, the impact to his business, but we did communicate back to him and send him an email. Um, and, you know, really his response back, his question is asking for compensation, which, you know, we don't, we just don't do in these cases.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. All right, so we will um move ahead to our consent agenda. Um, on our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting. Yeah, no problem.
It's really difficult to hear.
Okay.
For some reason, I guess this machine or the microphones are not.
Well, unfortunately, the microphones are an illusion. They're, they're, they're for the online Zoom, you know, and yeah, it's confusing. Um, it's the first time I've ever been asked to speak up, but I will, I will speak up. Absolutely. Yeah, sorry about that, Sam. Thank you for letting us know. Yeah. Um, all right, so with our um meeting minutes and our consent agendas from our September nineteenth uh meeting, if there's discussion, we can have that. Without discussion, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move that we approve the meeting notes.
I second it.
Right, we have a motion by Councilor Exner and a second by Councilor Walker to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
A nay, say nay or thumbs down? All right, motion carries uh to resolutions. All right. And they call this, open this public hearing. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four at seven fourteen. Um, please note that we will be having a staff report, and then we'll go into our public testimony immediately after our staff report. I will call for any abstentions from the hearing body. Are there any conflicts of interest? All right, time for the staff report. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight in front of you is resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-four, a temporary moratorium on development based on limited sewer capacity. Uh, some background uh to this issue. Um, I think most people in the community knows that we've been dealing with a large wastewater system issue here in Sandy over the last several years. Uh, we've been studying, planning, and working to address these issues uh for several years now. Um, and over the last year, a few years, uh, it's become very evident that the city sanitary sewer system does not have the sufficient capacity to accommodate uh, the demand on our, our system, especially during uh the wet weather flows. Um, and these capacity issues have led to violations of the city's MPD, MPDS permits uh at a wastewater treatment plant on Tickle Creek. And we're now under enforcement proceedings with the Environmental Protection Agency uh through the US Department of Justice, Justice, following a referral from the Oregon Department of environmental quality uh for bringing the city into compliance. And I think, as I said, the community and the council knows uh very well that we're currently investing millions of dollars into our collection system uh to address inflow and infiltration uh into our system, um, and also investing millions of dollars into an existing treatment plant, um, as well as all the future plans that we're putting into uh the work to address our long-term uh system capacity issues. So the city does have a history of violations that goes back several years. Um, total violation count of over two hundred permit violations. Uh, that's an aggregate of daily, weekly, and monthly violations uh as are calculated by DQ and the EPA. Um, that includes about thirty-three since two thousand twenty-one. Um, as we continue to make improvements in the collection system and the wastewater treatment plant. Um, under a previous mutual agreement in order with DQ, the city completed a wastewater uh facilities plan that we're now um working on amendment to, and that plan identified uh the solutions both in the short, short term and long term uh for our sewer system needs. Uh, so we're now working on an amendment of that facilities plan, determine the best uh long-term solution, but in the meantime, uh, we're continuing to invest in reducing the inflow and infiltration uh into the collection system and constructing the condition assessment improvements at our treatment plant, uh, which are underway right now. All in the effort to reduce flows to the plant and improve our plant's treatment performance to stay within compliance. To, to also assist us in this, uh, and to help us avoid additional violations and place more, uh, place more demands on the system uh while we construct the improvements, we're proposing a moratorium uh on new development proposals that would require connection to the sewer system. Uh, under state law, uh, cities can impose a temporary moratorium uh when there is a shortage of public facilities, and in this case of our sanitary sewer system, there is, as evident, uh, with the amount of violations and capacity issues at the treatment plant. Moratorium resolutions can be up to six months at a time, uh, but they can be extended for three additional times up to a maximum of two years, uh, as prescribed in state law. So what we're proposing is during this moratorium, our development services staff will not accept or process applications that propose or lead to newer sewer connections. This includes things that, um, as you can anticipate, new subdivisions, uh partitions, um, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, replats, uh, any development that would add another new connection and flows to the treatment system. Development services staff will continue to accept other types of applications. Um, you know, if there is a remodel for a homeowner wants to do remodel, that would not add or increase the sewer uh connection. That would be an example. The resolution as posed would be effective for the maximum of the six months. Uh, there is a likelihood of a, of an extension that would be needed. Um, and this is based on our schedule uh for when we would conduct an evaluation of our treatment facility, uh, also known as a stress test on the plant. Uh, our plans are, once our improvements, our current phase of improvements in the collection system and treatment plan are complete uh this winter, we'll be gearing up and preparing for that stress test next fall or sorry, next spring. Um, and that will help us determine, or that will determine the, the maximum flow capacity for the plant. And with these improvements that we're doing, we're anticipating uh that we'll be able to identify the additional capacity that the plant will be able to um take in and also uh allow us to lift the moratorium. So during that time, um, between now and the end of the moratorium, uh, we've negotiated to allow up to a hundred and twenty ERUs or equivalent residential units, which would which mean a hundred and twenty connections to our sewer system. And really, these uh connections are intended for developments that have been approved, uh, have a land use approval and are under construction, and that we anticipate and have estimated that they would be coming in for building permit to connect our sewer system um during the six months um plus of the moratorium. Um, again, an ERU is the equivalent of a single-family dwelling, and we have an ERU table in our city code that um explains and and uh describes uh the ERUs. And again, these hundred and twenty are based upon what we anticipate or have estimated uh to be connections that would be coming in between now and the stress test when it, when we identify additional capacity. Um, as I spoke earlier about um our Sandy Clean Waters project, um, we're going to conduct the stress test after we complete our current round of improvements, which include the collection system and flow and infiltration work in Basin six and seven. Um, we saw some promising results from the work that we've already done in Basins two and eight. And also, we have construction um underway at our treatment plant uh with uh, you know, pumping in millions of dollars into improving the condition there and the plant's performance so that we can meet. Uh, in the staff report, I touched on some of the financial impacts that we um are anticipating. Um, I kind of outlined that it's hard to come up with a good projection based upon the fact that we have some economic uncertainty with the economy uh and the housing market could change. Uh, and also, after the moratorium, we could see an influx of applications once that's lifted. Um, really, what we're looking at is uh immediate impact to, you know, planning fees from uh not collecting uh fees for subdivisions and annexations and partitions. Um, on the building side, since we've negotiated for and for allowing a hundred and twenty connections, we'll see steady revenue. Um, that's around about what we receive actually on average for building permits in a year. Um, and so we think we've uh, we've built enough cushion there to allow um building revenue to be steady. Long term, we can see some impacts just on slower growth, a lag uh with property tax growth and SDC collections. Um, if this has a dampening effect on development in Sandy. Uh, so communications, um, our plan, if the council adopts a moratorium, is we have our press release ready to go. Letters and emails and meetings with the development community. Um, and Kelly O'Neil was having to meet with uh all folks in the development community to explain and and walk through the moratorium and the hundred and twenty uh ERU connections. Um, as we've been doing for, for a few years now, is continued communications and all our social media and website, and of course, Sandy uh source newsletters about the project and where we're at um and getting the word out about the, the moratorium. Staff recommends that uh the city council adopts resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-four. And turn it over to you, Mayor, to connect the public hearing.
Thank you, Jordan. Appreciate it. We'll start to move ahead into our public testimony portion. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have materials that you wish to have considered by the city council's part of this hearing, please email your materials to recorder at ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure that your evidence is incorporated into the record. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand at the appropriate time to indicate you would like to speak and wait to be recognized. Uh, one little change there, since I have so many of these cards here. I'm not sure if we ever ran out of paper on them or not out there. Okay. Uh, if, is there anyone who wishes to, thinks you want to testify tonight that hasn't submitted a form yet? That's there? Okay. Well, what I'm gonna do is, is when it comes time to testify here in a second, I'm gonna just go through these forms. And then at the end, I'll do another opportunity for somebody to raise their hand and, and get up. Okay? Um, all right, if you're participating online, please click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. Jeff, our city recorder, will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules do require that each person state your name and address for the record. I now call for testimony um proposed. Oh, I will now call on testimony for the proposed resolution. Um, like I mentioned earlier, I'll go in order of however I have these here. Um, Jim Rays. Welcome, Jim. I reminded three minutes.
Uh, name and address. And my name is Jim Rays. I'm four zero two zero Northeast two hundred and sixteenth Avenue in Fairview. Um, I'm a local builder. I've been doing business with the city of Sandy since two thousand five, two thousand six. Uh, not new to most of your faces, but maybe some. Um, I guess I'm here in opposition or confusion about how quickly this had been brought about. Um, I heard uh some comment about the way this was put out. I'm not a resident, but I am a property owner here. I own the jewelry rich uh plat here currently. Um, I didn't receive one message. I don't do social media. I didn't receive a letter, not an email, zero notification. This may or may not affect me, but I'm here for the building community that you know, that this, this, this is putting one individual here that will be speaking in a huge predicament and how anyone can find that ethical, and I, I question legal, but I'm no lawyer. How, how can somebody take money and on a plant permit it? Let them start new construction and then deny them sewer connection? I've always viewed the building community as part of your team. Um, without us, you don't succeed. Without you, we don't succeed. So it seems like this has been a a very one-sided problem that's been going on for years that potentially has not been addressed. And now we have massive increases in cost, uh, maybe doubling on the potential SDC fees that I believe have been approved for January first. In addition, we're getting to be an uncompetitive market out here, and may, I don't know if that's what the city is looking for, but how do we keep welcoming business that we don't have capacity for? This is not an unknown issue by anyone, I would say, sitting at the behind the, the podium. We knew about these problems, but we've permitted and taken in numerous projects since these projects have, or this issue is not a problem. And now we're, we're here where, how does somebody feed millions of dollars of cost while a moratorium's in place? This will never happen in six months. And we all know, there'll be multiple extensions would be my guess by the time this is finished. So how does somebody navigate those waters and be part of the team that you guys need for, uh, excuse me, for SDC permits to continue to facilitate the improvements that are needed here? So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, um, I think Sarah Higgins. Right, did I say that right? Welcome.
My name is Sarah Higgins. Um, I live at one three nine five Southwest Ten Street in Troutdale. I'm the project manager for Mac Even, an even better home. I'm the project manager for Mac Even and Even Better Homes. We received this notice in a roundabout way without so much as a hint or courtesy from the city. On behalf of Even Better Homes, I've been party to the permit process for land use approval through the issuance and stamping of our approved set of plans by city officials on the development of Vista Loop and Highway 26. Not so much as a whisper of a plea to stop development. The decision to implement a moratorium on development in the city of Sandy is more than 63 pages of documents and presented findings and research. This decision has a human base. It is the developers and builders, the subcontractors from site development to the final cleaning of a home right before a family eagerly moves in. The anticipated trickle down effect of this proposed moratorium 22 to 24 isn't a trickle, but a landslide. The families of each and every one of the people who worked to build the homes will be affected immensely. Loss of income from the contracts could impact for years to come. Our daycare schools, markets, local business and children will be those that pay the price for this stop. My family, my little son, will not be able to continue the school he loves so much. Affecting communities outside of the city of Sandy as much as those within city limits. If development stops or cannot continue as planned and approved by the city, where will we work? How will we provide the basic needs for our families who we have dedicated our long days to? How can the city justify the loss of income not only to itself from the new tax base, but to the community it's supposed to serve? We have invested right. We relied on the city in good faith and our project would move forward. We asked right questions and received official answers. Yet here we all today defending our project and the livelihoods against injustice. We relied on your promises and it could lead to our economic detriment. To the detriment of local businesses who have anticipated a large influx of new neighbors to serve, of students to teach, of subcontractors looking to hire new and train new, fill positions for new tradesmen. How do we tell them? How can we help provide affordable housing to those in need if we cannot build them? Those looking to move their families to Sandy for a way of life outside of a city in a safe school and a beautiful setting. Why are we being punished for the inadequacy of a city to fix their problems? Thank you.
Next is Evan Kobe. Get your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Evan Cobb, 4222 Southeast Adams Street, Milwaukee, 97222. So my name's Evan Cobb. Obviously said that. I work with Even Better as a project manager for hard services. My biggest responsibility is communicating with Mac about upcoming houses and forecasting how many houses we can finish for him. If I don't do that with accuracy, I lose my job. What I've seen from Mac is him following every rule and request that you've given him. He has laid out exactly what he planned to do here in Sandy. You approved it and gladly took his money. Mac took this as a green light to build and heavily invest his and others' money into the development of Cedar Creek, a subdivision you approved. I hear you talk about the financial impacts of anticipated loss of fee revenue. The thing is, you and everyone in the city government still gets paid. Regardless, you're not seeing how many families are impacted by not allowing these houses to be built. My company employs quite a few people who are depending on Cedar Creek being built to feed their families. I think the most frustrating part of this is the lack of transparency and total disregard for the people that build homes in Sandy. It's impossible to build, to plan builds for a moratorium that could last six, 12, 18, 24. You guys don't have like a set amount of time. I'm not suggesting that the overflow isn't a problem or something shouldn't be done, but it's not our problem to fix. It's yours. It's been going on for years. You gave builders a green light to build these homes with all of the data available to you. So let them build and fix the wastewater issue at the same time.
We have Christina Molina. Mayor, state your name and address. Welcome.
My name is Christina Molina. I live at 40304 Therese, Therese Street here in Sandy. I've lived here for about 40 years. Um, I have actually more than a couple of questions for you guys, and it may not be anything that you're going to be able to answer at this meeting. First, I would like to know when this became a problem for the sewer system. The only way I found out about the severity of this situation was on Friday through Facebook. Seriously, through Facebook? And why was there no notification given to anyone prior to this meeting and wanting to bring it to a vote? No one knew anything about this. And then all of a sudden, we're smacked in the face with that we have this moratorium. You just approved my subdivision, June 27th of 22. Why are we approving subdivisions when we don't have the sewer capacity? Actually, looking at your website, which is not up to date, by the way, you have approved four different subdivisions for a total of 183 homes. And three of those were back in last year. One of them was just this year. I have requested all, all records from attorneys, DEQ staff and the EPA going all the way back to 2019. And I did this Friday when I found out about this information. I was told by the city staff that it would be at least 10 business days before they could give me any of that information. So I am asking for a stay on this vote until we figure out where this problem started and when it started because we're approving stuff that we shouldn't have been approving. And we have hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars vested in these projects that you're wanting these builders or developers to sit around for two years because it states specifically in your, your paperwork, it says it is anticipated that the additional capacity will not be demonstrated within this timeframe of six months. I was also told there was a gag order in place. So Friday, when I came in and I requested the information, I was told by Kelly that there was a gag order in place and they could not talk about this. So I would like to know, was it a city gag order? Who ordered the gag? Or was it court ordered? These builders and developers have invested a ton of money. And actually, I have another property under contract with a developer.
20 seconds.
Okay. That can't be annexed into the city or whatever, but this developer is paying to keep this man who's lived here all his life in a retirement center because he has no money. He's cash poor, property rich. Why am I bringing it up? It's not only affecting builders and developers who have already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, but, and if not millions, that people who have lived here their whole lives and depending on the sale of their property. If you've ever thought about retirement, you too are looking at the value of your home and the cash you're going to be able to get out of it. I was told that you were going to be issuing 120 permits and it would be on a first come, first served basis. How did you come up with that number? And Kelly said it was going to increase, but we don't know what it's going to increase to or when. And you expect the developers to just sit along the sidelines for up to two years is what your extensions could be? Why they've already forked out all of this money?
Next step, and this was submitted online. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Wrong sheet. Dave Carter.
Back at it again. Good on Vista Loop. I know Mac Evans' project is going in there. We came down and looked at all the plans. Some of them look pretty good. The final plan looked great. 35 units. Well, guess what? Planning commission works on this is how many we can put in. We're going to have a sewer that can take care of that, but the state stepped in and said, oh, guess what? Two houses on every lot. Now it's 10 inch, we'll do about 4,800 fixture units with what's going in and be done. That would be probably half full, if not two thirds full. That line's inadequate for what can be built on Vista Loop on the north side. Who's going to pay for that? I know who's going to pay for it. Everybody that's got property in this town is going to pay to bring those sewers up to, up to snuff. I understand development needs to be done and everything, but the city's kind of got, I think, got their hands tied a little bit with this feeling able to put in two units on every lot. That 35 that was going to go on Vista Loop is now 70. I don't know. I'm glad I'm not a planner. Thank you.
This is the one that was submitted online. Chris Anderson. Oh, at the end? Oh, okay. All right, we'll go Julie Stevens.
We'll give this a try. No, you're right. It's an illusion. But I can speak up. I'm Julie Stevens. I live at 12933 Southeast 10th I Road. Sandy, it's the property adjacent to the old Roslyn Lake property. And I've spoken here over the last several years, a couple of times, a few times. So some of us here are very well aware of the issue of the wastewater treatment plan development and the process. And actually, I'm here in support of the resolution. I was happy to see this. I commend you for the work that you've been doing on the additional basins of the INI basins and addressing the waste, the the excessive wastewater that needs to be treated seems like a very reasonable thing to do. I do see this as a six month moratorium. I think that I appreciate that you've slowed down in some of the process and are, are working on the problems that exist rather than moving quickly forward, finding new places to discharge. And since I was flooded for five years by PG&E through their inadvertent and mismanagement unintended consequences of not having a way of a stormwater plan for that recontouring of Roslyn Lake that's resulted in the flooding of our property and many others in our area for over five years until they diverted the water in a different direction. So I do appreciate your taking every effort to make the smartest choices, use your money the most wisely. And I'm sorry for those who might also suffer. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mac Evans.
My name's Mac Even. I live at 5360 Southeast Chase Road in Gresham. I am developing the property up on Vista Loop and Highway 26. And I've been working very closely with city staff to, through the permitting process and getting engineering approval. I've had fairly regular communication with most of the people. The senior planner, city manager. Over the last several months, there's a DEQ question about the project that was already approved by the city. And so we've been in fairly regular communication throughout that timeframe. And, and it was specifically speaking about the sewer and also talking about middle housing and what that was going to look like and the process to, to do that. At no time during any of those meetings were we informed that there might possibly be a moratorium that would affect developments, affect the ability to get permits for planned homes that were approved by you and also to be able to do middle housing, which is, can help out with the needed affordability problems that we see all over the place. I learned about this on Facebook. And I had a conversation less than a week before that on Friday, September 23rd with the city manager and the senior planner. And I was assured that things were going to be okay with the EQ and we would have an answer next week, which was last week. And friend of mine came across it on Facebook and said, hey, did you see this? And I was like, what are you talking about? Communication isn't there and I feel misled and I feel like lies of omission are still lies. And this could last six months. I don't think I've ever heard of a moratorium lasting six months. This is a potential two-year problem. And the ability for me and a lot of other people to make a living and continue could be very much in jeopardy because of this. This could ruin me. Possible bankruptcy. I really want to understand what the timeframes are and I want to understand how this process is going to move forward so I can possibly plan and see if I can work through this. I have invested a lot of time, a lot of money, worked with staff on this piece of property for years and years, went through a denial, came back, got it approved. And I don't even get a phone call.
20 seconds.
I would like to take the city manager up on this offer for a meeting at some point in the near future. And I'd really like to know when this might be complete. So, thank you.
Next, we have Janet Davis.
My name is Janet Davis. I'm trying to speak loudly here. I live at 40601 Southeast Cupid Road, Sandy, Oregon. I do not live within the city limits. I'm a member of a local citizen action committee. We call it Don't Waste the Sandy River. In the past, we and a number of other organizations have written to the city about our concerns and suggestions regarding the 2019 wastewater treatment plan. At this point, we urge the adoption of resolution 2022-24. We recognize, especially after hearing prior testimony, that this is not an easy decision. But it is the right one. And we hope that you would implement it as soon as possible. We also urge that the city implement programs and other efforts to help sanitary sewer customers reduce their demand through efficiency and or conservation. This is a quote from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So just another thing to add to your list. But in addition, we really appreciate and want to express that appreciation for all the work being done by the new public works director and her staff. We think they're doing a great job in very difficult circumstances. And we will be submitting a for, a written comment for the record. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. Travis Decker.
It's my awful handwriting.
From one to another, mine are horrible too.
I'm Travis Decker. I live at 16019 Southeast 10th. I'm a member of the group with Janet. And especially hearing the developers talk here, I think the biggest thing that you guys have to deal with is you've got a public PR crisis and you're not effectively communicating with your constituents. And this is a really big deal. The EPA has been involved. You're not doing this for fun. You're doing it because it's against law. And the city, city will keep having violations and fines. It's got to be dealt with. And it's really expensive and it's a giant pain in the butt. That's what you're paid for, right? I don't know how you can solve it, but it seems like this amendment, this resolution needs to be passed. But at that point, we really need to come together as a community and like really talk about solutions and not just get developing permits when we're going to staff stiff developers. I mean, this is just not, you know, I, I own a business in the city that works and I like to think that the city is a little bit better than that. It maybe works. Let's make it work. And you're not going to do it with Facebook. You need to get, get people's phone numbers, talk to, have more public meetings, get the public involved. Let everybody know how big a problem this water issue is so that people can rally behind actually doing something about it instead of just getting blindsided and losing money. And I thank you for all your service because it's not an easy job, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hi, Judy Ritz.
My name is Judy Ricks. I live at two, four, eight, eight, four Southeast Spurwood Road outside of Sandy Limits, but I've been a Realtor at Brookshire Hathaway for over forty years. I have a client whose name is Alfred Schmitz that owns property down at three sixty-second south of Fred Myers where the bark otees into three sixty-second, the property on the west side. Okay. He's had two strokes, has no use of his left arm. Has spent all of his savings on care. He's currently in Cascadia Village. And his son, Matthew, and I met on June second, two thousand twenty-one, which is over a year ago. We zoomed with Kelly O'Neil and Emily on a pre-application annexation for his property. Again, he's out of money and that's what's left to do is sell the property. And currently he's in the county, but he's right next to the city limits. And it sounded very promising that we would be able to be annexed to the city. Okay, even knowing that it was going to be six months of paperwork after it was turned into you guys. Therefore, we placed the property on the market July twenty-eighth of that year because again, we needed to find somebody to keep him in Cascadia. And we got a great offer from one of the local builder contractors. We told him our story, our sad story, that lack of money. And he has graciously given five thousand dollars a month, every month directly to our seller so that he has his care that he could keep in Cascadia Village. My question is, is what's going to happen to him if we cannot be annexed for up to two years? Where does he go? How do we pay? I don't know. His property is worth too much to go on Medicaid. There's no other avenues to tap money from. The moratorium sounds, it looks to me like from the paperwork that it's already a done deal because there's something in there ready for you to sign that says we're approved. So again, like the rest of her saying, I think everybody got blindsided by this. We were hoping to be able to be annexed. We did meet with Kelly and Jordan again after that. And they told us that we could probably be annexed with conditions, meaning that we had to wait for the sewer to come in. We knew about the the testing that you're going to be doing and waiting for next spring. So we actually thought we were waiting for next spring to be able to go forward with this project.
Twenty seconds for me.
Okay. So again, I feel really bad because I don't know how to tell Mr. Schmitz. And if our builder goes away because of the lack of money, I don't know how to tell him that we don't have any money for him anymore. The funny thing of it is the Schmidt family have been here in Sandy for over fifty years. His mother taught school at grade school here for multiple years. He's got an Aunt Kate Schmidt that's got a street named after from over there by Goodwill. And the funny thing is July fourteenth of nineteen seventy-one, his mother, who was then had already lost her husband, gave to the city a thirty-foot wide, five hundred and fifty feet long easement, a hole across the end of their property to the city of Sandy for the sewer for ten bucks. And now we can't annex or hook him up. And I just think it's just a dirty shame.
Thank you. All right. Chris Anderson.
Chris Anderson, three, eight, one, zero, one Southeast Kays Lane, boring. I want to agree with this guy right here that said you guys have a PR mess with this because it wasn't handled very well. I also wanted to say I agree with Matt, Christina, Jim, a couple of other people over here that, you know, at minimum, you guys should really rewrite part of this because it's not real clear on whether this affects Max's project that's already been approved and whether it affects the middle housing on it either, and same with Jim's. So some things to think about before you sign it.
Thank you. All right, so that I am through with what has been submitted for public comment. Is there anyone here in attendance that wants to provide public comment or testimony? All right, was there anyone online?
So Mayor, just wait one more minute for any raised hands. So there should be a button at the bottom that says raise hand if you would like to speak.
All right, seen then, and we will move to the staff recap and recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me as I kind of try to roll through these on the notes. First of all, we, you know, there's a lot of comments about notification and PR. And that's a very important thing to address. And I, you know, probably should have included that in the presentation to make that more clear. And, you know, this is not an easy thing, obviously. Cities don't adopt moratorium very often. And the main reason why we didn't advertise this widely and in advance, and we did follow all the legal notices with DLCD is around this issue of vested rights. And what we're trying to avoid is, you know, a race to get applications in before the moratorium is adopted. Because we're finding what we're at right now, the city and the sewer capacity is that we have a certain amount of vested rights, so land use approvals that have already been approved by the city in the planning commission, city council, development services staff that have vested rights that we anticipate connecting to our sewer system at some point. Now, we negotiated a hundred and twenty connections that would take place between, you know, now and the completion of a stress test, stress test, whether treatment plant. And once that's done, we're anticipating that all this money that we're pumping into our collection system, our wastewater treatment plant, will show that we will have additional capacity to have additional connections for Mr. Evans' project, for example. And so we did our projections. We looked at it. We forecasted out what projects have vested and how many connections we anticipate with each of those connections. And when we anticipate them to come in to the planning department and submit for a building permit. And so that's how we derived at the hundred and twenty connections between now and the stress test. Beyond that, there's hundreds more, like Mr. Evans' projects, project we anticipate happening spring, summer of next year, when those homes are starting to come out of the ground. He's going to be pulling permits to connect to our sewer system. So again, on the notification, I understand the frustration. We do like to communicate. We like to be transparent. In this case, we have extreme legal risk to continue to allow additional vested rights and land use applications to get within the goalpost that we don't have capacity for. Secondly, we are under confidential negotiations because we're under enforcement by the EPA and DOJ. And we're in negotiations with them over the prior violations, the penalties of the wastewater treatment plant. So we're limited in what we can actually talk about in that enforcement case. So I explained some of the vested rights issue, trying to make that clear. I know it's it's kind of complex, a hundred and twenty, what's an ERU? So we really are encouraging developers that have vested rights, come and talk to us, meet with me, meet with Kelly, kind of walk through that, show you our projections, talk to you about when you anticipate connecting and how we can facilitate that, explain more about the stress test and what that's going to entail. We hope to be able to prove in terms of our capacity. In terms of Cedar Creek, again, our projections and again, working with the builder and the developers, understanding when that connection is anticipated. And again, negotiating for the hundred and twenty connections was for those projects that are pulling permits now. We have like Shaly Meadows and a couple of developments that are building homes. They're coming in weekly to pull permits for sewer connections. We wanted to make sure that we got those vested rights included. And then again, following the stress test, we're anticipating identifying additional capacity to add those other vested rights into the the system. I explained a little bit how we got to that hundred and twenty connections. Again, we have the land use approvals. We've estimated how many connections are approved through those land use approvals and then estimating based on the progress on those projects when we anticipate seeing them come in for connections. And then explained a little bit about the confidentiality, land use criteria on past. There was comments about, you know, we do have a number of developments that have invested recently. And part of this is what we're able to use as criteria when we have a land use application in demonstrating sewer capacity. And one of the ways that we can actually do the analysis and demonstrate sewer capacity is a stress test. And as I mentioned, we've been under enforcement proceedings and these things tend to move slow and then move fast. And so our plans to now conduct that stress test is based upon these proceedings and us needing to identify what capacity we have at the treatment plant in order to allow additional connections and facilitate these vested rights to be able to connect to our system. So I understand kind of the confusion and the frustration over, you know, the city just a couple of years ago or even last year has approved this development. And some of that again is is due to the fact that what we can actually use as criteria. But some of it is also the fact that we are working hard and working fast on trying to address our immediate need for our sewer system, investing in our collection system. We've, like I said, we've finished two basins. We're currently underway on two more to reduce the amount of flows into the system and the treatment plant. We're investing ten million dollars into our existing treatment plant. And we're spending millions of dollars on planning for the future for expanding our capacity to be able to plan even further into the future of not just these vested rights and these developments, but the ones that we can anticipate down the road, too. I think tried to touch on all the topics. There was a lot of questions there. But again, I understand, appreciate the frustration. And Mr. Even, I know it's difficult, you know, speaking with you one week and knowing that we have something. But I'm also have to hold my integrity to keep things confidential and making sure things don't go public. That would make our legal risk even greater if we got more vested rights before we're able to adopt a moratorium.
All right, before we go into discussion, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
For a second, second. There's a motion by Councilor Smallwood and a second by Councilor Hopkinson to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying I or give me a thumbs up. I oppose, nays, or a thumb down. All right, motion carries. We're in the discussion. I mean, you know, the one message, you know, and as we go into discussion among each other and the message I just really want to be, you know, sent out here is, is, I mean, it is really decades of issues, you know, that has really brought us, you know, to this point. You know, we've been having conversations as far as, you know, since I've been elected as mayor. Remember, my very first meeting, you know, I come in here and it's the first presentation about what's truly going on in our wastewater treatment and that, you know, we have a hundred million dollar project that we have in front of us that we that we got to go through. And through conversations, enforcement actions from DEQ, then we got moved over to the EPA. There's, we've had, you know, the biggest part of what I think Jordan communicated that I hope people hear is is negotiations. We have heavily been going back and forth with EPA and DEQ and have had, it's been made very clear that there is severe enforcement action pending against our community of which could possibly, you know, bankrupt our community of Sandy. And so we're entering into negotiations with that kind of, you know, weight weighed over those negotiations and has really kind of led to this point. And so we've been able to come to this agreement through a year, year and a half of back and forth resistance. Push, push back that has really kind of brought us, you know, to this moment. I know that there's been conversations, it was brought here tonight about different properties being annexed in and having conversations with our city staff. I know that we've had development projects that have come in front of this council where we have talked about our wastewater, you know, treatment, you know, capacity concerns in that facility. It's been an ongoing conversation in this community now for two years. We went through pretty hefty rate increases about a year and a half ago, two years ago, right before the holiday season. That was a tremendous conversation in this community. Many of you will remember a raise in system development charges in our SDCs to go towards our our water and wastewater that occurred, you know, about a year and a half ago. So this is stuff that we've been having in front of us that we've been actively dealing with as a council. That's really kind of come to this moment for this temporary moratorium that we have in front of us. So anyway, just wanted to start with that. Yes, please.
I understand how this could affect, I think her name was the elderly, the Realtor lady. In that situation, I'm sorry, what?
Later, Judy.
I'm sorry, did I say, okay? I'm sorry. Okay. Um, but help me understand, Jordan and Kelly, on the vested rights. My understanding was that for all the subdivisions that improved, been approved, including Cedar Creek, which was already approved, that there was, we had capacity, a hundred and twenty hookups would cover everything that had already been approved. Is that not, so a lot of the comments that said this is affecting subdivisions that have already been approved. Can you kind of clarify that for me? How much, how much, how many vested rights do we have? And how many approvals do we have? Or I guess, and why aren't they vested also if they've already had approvals?
Yeah. Understand your question. So what, again, what we've, what we've identified with all the vested rights, all the land use approvals that we have today, and there is still some applications in process of the process, actually. I think there's about six hundred total ERUs that are in the pipeline or that are vested. Now, not all of those may go forward. We have land use approvals that happen and they don't get built. Financing doesn't happen. They just want to walk away from it, take a pause. But when we look at when they were approved, what kind of permits they pulled? Have they done their public improvement plan reviews? Are they starting to move dirt? You know, we forecast when we anticipate they'll actually be coming in to connect to the city sewer when they pull a building permit, actually are building homes. And of that number between now and next, you know, springtime, May, June, was about eighty-five. We're looking about eighty-five years. So there's still a cushion there. Things move faster than we anticipate. We're like, oh, you know, I'm going to get in. I want to build homes now or build, you know, condos now or apartments now to be part of that one twenty. But what what we don't know yet is how much capacity that we will be able to demonstrate after the stress test. We have done some preliminary flow analysis based on basins two and eight, which are actually very promising. We saw some great gains in terms of reduction of wet weather flows. And and so we're doing the next leaky basins and basin six and seven. And like I said, we've putting ten million dollars into our wastewater treatment plant to improve the aeration basins, clarifiers, another filter. And so the treatment plant performance will be even better, too. And so after that stress test evaluation, we anticipate showing that we'll have capacity to then accommodate the other vested rights. What we're trying to do with the moratorium is not add to that number. While we're trying to fight the flows and improve our system, we can't keep generating vested rights until we're able to, you know, catch up and really invest.
Yeah.
So a couple of statements and then question. One is, is that I really feel the angst of many of the developers and Realtors in the room having lived this life my life in the last twenty years as a Realtor and knowing that there's a lot of things that are questioned at the moment. But in what in the things that I want to emphasize, one is, is that the in what in the things that I want to emphasize, one is is that the mayor's conversation about the negotiations that we did with DEQ, DOJ. Things that have to be kept under wraps until we're given the legal risk ability to open those things up, it's been really been a frustration for a lot of us, myself included. I wanted to scream to the rafters about some of the things that we've had to go through and quite frankly, there have been some angry meetings in this past. Oh, my goodness, gotta be a year now that we've been in intense conversations, but believe me that these have been choked, they've been told, we've been told, can't express them for a number of different reasons. But that being done, this is now the opening of that particular piece of work. We we can't say everything that we have been through the negotiations, there are some things that we still can't say, but I would hope that in any developer, any realtor, any person who is thinking about annexing, developing, connecting with a sewer of some kind, that you could come to our staff and get a realistic, honest, as open as possible statement about what your development, what your property has the potential or timing that can be connected. And what that impact is and as as I understand at this point, it will be very few people will be said turned away. Now, I don't know, we might get a bunch in in a speed that we couldn't be able to go after, but I as I understand it, this is something that we will not be telling a large number of people, sorry, we can't connect and so you're gonna have to wait, who knows how long. So that being said, I do want to look at staff and say, I I know that there's a lot of stuff that we couldn't say, but from this point on, we need to be as open and as transparent as we possibly can. There will be stuff that we can't say, but I think it really behoves us to be able to say as much as we can. Good stuff, bad stuff, there it is. So we need to be able to do that. And then finally, I guess I would put the angst on the company here as well as folks who are listening in. If you have a question, please come to us and I I will try to be as open as possible, I know I can raise my hand and say, I'll meet with you if you need to talk to you about what that might be, how that might work. Staff are gonna have more of the details, but really, this is not a attempt to backstab, to take apart away from our development, we want to be partners. Conversations, we've had a couple of people who submitted their comments this evening, this is not hopefully that we can get past this, but I do know we're trying as best we can to make that happen, so with that.
Sure, thanks, Mark. Thanks for sharing and coming out for me as a honestly, new counselor, it's not news that we're in a new season, but this is the first time I've seen this room full, so that's kind of cool for me to, I'm a terrible subject we're here for, but it's it's cool to see people engaged and caring. I want to say a couple of things, when when Carl and I appreciate what he said about, you know, we want to be honest, we want to be transparent with you. That probably doesn't seem real sit real well right after we just surprised you with a whole bunch of stuff you didn't know about. And so I hate that part of this. Other aspects of my life, you know, I've had to keep secrets too, I'm not very good at it, you know, I try not to have too many, but I think there's a lot of public information that's important, I think that we all look at when we're we're looking at something like this and that it's available, it's just sometimes we don't all draw the pieces together, we don't connect all the parts, but the sewer system has been in violations for a long time. Those public have been noted on newspaper articles and and other other things and and our problems are well known. Number two is the fact the EPA is involved, that's the public knowledge, that's an escalation above where it was a couple of years ago when people were talking, so I I I feel bad that we can't say or haven't been able to say and there's still things being worked through, so this is this is a piece. But I also want to tell you about changes and where we're going and I think probably maybe put a little perspective on it, Carl and I sit on the wastewater oversight committee and we're able to meet with Jenny. Who's our public works director. And two years ago, we didn't have an engineer in that role. We've had good people, they worked their butts off, they plugged the dike every time it got a leak, they'd they'd fix it and keep it going. But there's a difference to somebody who proactively maintains their car and somebody who fixes it every time it breaks. And the car is going to have a different reliability rating. Well, you know, it may seem cheaper to let it go a little longer, but you pay for it in the long run and our day of reckoning has come. We have from it, and I've spent a lot of my career in asset management. And we have deficiencies that in some cases were systemic, going back decades from funding and prioritization and and the right amount of visibility and and focus. This council and this staff is very focused on those things. It's taken us a while to get there. And I don't mean just this, but I mean a couple iterations of council to get to that point where we're ready to tackle this and take it on. And the hires we've had and Jenny and her staff are bringing a fresh perspective to this and bringing in a very modern asset management approach. Which starts at the top and works all the way down to those contractors that spend their day down in the wastewater train, plea treatment plan, keeping things going. It I think all of us wish that we could have continued along our path to make improvements and get things up to par without a moratorium. That that isn't our lot, so this is where we are, it's it's a solid plan. You know, to several of you noted that we don't know how long the moratorium is gonna take. There are risks and uncertainties. We won't know until we get the test results, how good those test results are, what kind of whether they bias, how and how many additional connections we can we can go forward with, or if they identify new problem, we have to go chase, but the commitment is there, we're committing money, we're committing resources to fix those problems and address them as quick as we can. And that that's been rewarding to see the 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 speed at which these things have been challenged, I mean Jenny came on, she was working double shifts when she came on, just trying to put this new plan together. And scope it and then just turn things around, budgets and and contracts as fast as we can, so I just want to throw that out there for perspective.
Yeah, I want to say, you know, this is probably the hardest thing that I'm having to to talk about or having to deal with. It's not as hard as what you guys are going through and I understand that, but while being on the council and having many years of decisions and things to go through, I know as a city, this is not a I learned early on that you have to be growing as a city to maintain a city, inflation and everything else, and that comes on building, developing and being able to do that. And so, you know, this, you know, is one of my biggest fears as a counselor in being up here for that. You know, there are times when we are just not able to legally speak about things and that sucks. It really sucks because we don't want to not be able to speak about things. And but there are certain things that were just mandated that we can't for a variety of reasons, and this was one of them. For that, I can tell you that staff has has been, you know, hit hard, they they've got a hard job, they got an amazing hard job because, you know, and I hear about the relationships and how they work with the relationships with the building staff, building community and you know, wanting to be able to communicate this as well. And, you know, but for the same reasons why why we haven't been able to to communicate on it. We have been going through this a long year, long time here, you know, trying to and I'd say successfully being able to move forward and getting to where we are. You know, it's been on this council and a couple councils before, Stan has had some help in Salem as well as the rest of the council and staff of getting some grants and funding that have been able to help with the burden of the price tag of doing that and bringing that forward. I don't know, we haven't talked about anything bigger than this sewer plant in the last, you know, four years, I think it's been or more in that process. But it is probably the last thing I thought I'd ever have to see is having moratorium. Just never in my wildest dreams or ever see that and having it be kind of forced upon us is is really not great. On the other hand, I think the work that they've been doing in the last couple of basins and being able to improve that sewer treatment plant has been will build that capacity and and hopefully get that out sooner. I I think there was no good timing of when it could come out because there's no time because we're constantly developing like we should be. But but, you know, this is in a lot of ways, waiting for this day to be able to share this out, it was gonna come, whether it was a month ago or was there's a month from now, right? Like it was something that we all have wanted to get out there, so anyways, that being said, I think that I don't know, looking at the glass half full type of person that, you know, when we do that stress test there, it will add for additional capacity to be able to continue for the next stage. But, you know, that is a a risk and I and I guess that is just what we know so far, so.
And I guess the only thing that I'd add is recognition and and some of you brought it up when you were talking that the city has been being fined by DEQ for fifteen plus years. Every winter. And so we have spent the better part of the last year pushing back and arguing with DEQ as much as we could and they chose to escalate and get the EPA involved, which essentially tied our hands in a lot of respects, and so now we are doing everything that we can to comply with them so that we don't get the city in any further issues or problems. I realize that doesn't help any of you who are developers in the short term. But know that we're also looking at going after funding out of the legislature this year to try and speed this process up as much as we can. Serving two functions, one to hasten our project, but also to help reduce rates for the taxpayers who are here. So know that everything that was said tonight did not fall on deaf ears. We have a lot of the same frustrations recognizing that I, none of us having of the money involved that many of you do, but that we've fought as hard as we could to avoid this and we're just at a point where we're boxing against the wall and don't have much choice.
Let's say we also recognize that the future development helps curb the cost of the residents that live here and without that, that means it's bearing more on the residents that live here currently.
That's exactly right.
So we recognize and we know that it's heavy, feels heavy to be able to take one of our legs out of that stool that will help fund that sewer treatment plant and for a time period, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it's Rich, yeah.
Just one sec. Okay, so I apologize for not being there. I'm under the weather, so my voice will hold up for a minute, that's probably a good thing. With all seriousness, though, I want to recognize the challenges that I've heard today, it's pretty impactful and I I want to echo a lot what everyone else has said that this isn't an easy decision. I for one believe that I ran with development needs to pay for itself and I feel like we're making significant strides towards that direction, I kind of feel like this is a step backwards from that. But I also feel it's the right thing to do rather than just to keep, keep allowing the complaints that you that was brought forward of of just allowing it to continue on and on and not addressing it. And at some point we have to address it so we keep ourselves out of trouble. We, I I know this council is going to continue to seek funds and resources, we got some last year and we're going to continue to do that because we recognize that this is important. And we want to welcome the people, the homes that you're building for the people that are going to be our future neighbors, so I'm about to lose my voice, so I'm gonna go ahead and cut it there, thank you.
Thank you. And and just I'll kind of close off discussion with very impactful comments tonight. And thank you for everybody for coming out and and for continued dialogue and conversation on this, you know. I think if any one of us could get into a DeLorean and go back to twenty five, thirty years ago. You know, and and start twisting some arms and getting folks to invest and to raise rates to a certain degree and system development charges proactively, so that's not all at one time and we're, you know, that's able to compound over many years and we're able to, you know, sidestep these issues that we see today, man, we would do that. Goodness knows, I would, I would. And so anyways, we hear, we hear you. We, I know we don't take, you know, this forward step without without those thoughts and and a heavy heart of doing it, we definitely understand the people and the lives that this impacts to a great deal, so.
Yeah, ready for a motion?
Yes.
I moved adopt resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty four approving a moratorium on development pursuant to OFS one ninety seven dot five oh five to one ninety seven dot five forty based on limited sanitary sewer capacity.
For a second. It's a hard second, a little second. Yeah, and so I'll do a motion from councillor Hopkinson, a second from councillor Smallwood. And all those in favor signify by saying I. Thumbs up, yeah, opposed, nay or thumbs down? Motion carries. Right, thank you, thank you, everybody. All right, under old business, we'll go to Sandy Clean Water update.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, take a couple, this is, so some folks and it may be of interest to folks in the the audience. An update on where we're at with the wastewater system improvements project.
Wait for non-existent microphone, well. Hello, everyone, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jennifer Coker, I'm the new public works director, I've been here seven-ish months and so there's an incredible amount of work happening and progress on the Sandy Clean Waters program update and so after this very difficult decision that was made tonight, I I wanted to show the community as well as council what we're doing and what the plan is moving forward because there's been a lot of changes, so. Our existing wastewater system, I'm glad I decided to give a little bit of review tonight. Located out on Jarrell Road, the wastewater treatment plant was built in nineteen seventy one, it had an upgrade in nineteen ninety eight. And it has a a ten ten permit for BOD and TSS, we also have an ammonia limit. Six months out of the year, we discharge to Tickle Creek, which is in the Clackamas River water watershed. And for six months, May to October, we're prohibited from discharging to surface water. And we have a recycle water program that's been running for twenty years, really innovative, pretty tough to do with the Oregon climate because it's oftentimes pretty rainy in October and sometimes even June. But one hundred percent of our water is rated Class B affluent goes to a local nursery. I think the best way to think about this and capitalizing on a lot of the communications work that's been done is to think about we have a series of three problems, challenge number one is our collection system, that's all the sewer pipes that can collect. we have a series of three problems. Challenge number one is our collection system. That's all the sewer pipes that collect our sewage, convey it to the wastewater treatment plant. But not to find a point on it, we have a, we have leaky pipes. So what you want is you want a really tight system where only the wastewater is conveyed to the treatment plant, which is symbolized by this. Unfortunately, there's lots of gaps and openings. We get rainfall and groundwater in and it swells the water that comes to the treatment plant. And it's, it's just not good management to do that. It's expensive to treat that water. So that's problem number one is tightening up that system, fixing and rehabilitating those pipes to really slim down and only treat the wastewater that we generate. The second problem has to do with the treatment. Wastewater is a really tough environment. It wears things down. And we have a lot of aging mechanical equipment for processing and treating the water that needs to be upgraded or replaced. And in addition, Sandy has been growing and so we do need to replace and expand some of the equipment at that treatment plant. And then finally, we also have a challenging affluent disposal. Many towns are able to just focus on their leaky pipes, focus on their treatment. However, we have essentially a bottleneck. It's, it's a mass load limit about how much treated affluent we are allowed to discharge to the Clackamas River Basin because of something called the Three Basin Rule, which is in place to protect the downstream watersheds. And so we need to come up with, as you can see, what's projected for the next twenty years coming in is more than what we're allowed to discharge to Tickle Creek. So we need to develop an alternative discharge. So think of the program in terms of those three elements. And we have a three-step plan. So fix the leaky pipes, keep the clean blue water out, just try and make our system as tight as possible. Number two, we need to replace as well as expand our existing treatment plant, whether that's two treatment plants or whether that's one larger one. And the third one is to build a second outfall and pipeline. And the facility plan that was adopted in twenty nineteen recommended a path of applying for a Sandy River Pipeline and Outfall. Moving on to the progress that's been made, there's been a tremendous amount of work in the collection system. We call it the RDINI Reduction Program. Engineers have a lot of acronyms. But essentially what we're doing is we've, we've been studying and we're focusing on the leakiest basins, the worst basins. We want to get the best bang for our buck. And the worst basins were basins two and eight. Those were started two years ago. They finished earlier this year. And this year, starting in January, we went through a process where we hired an engineer that completed a design, went out for CMGC, and we're now under construction for basin six and seven. Furthermore, we're moving ahead to start investigating the next two leakiest basins, which happened to be basin five as well as basin ten. So kind of to sum up what's going on, we've done some preliminary modeling, looking at the amount of the clean water that's getting into those pipes by tightening up and rehabbing these systems. How much water have we, you know, removed that won't be conveyed to our treatment plant? Basin two and eight, right now, we do need to validate it, but it's anticipated we've, we've reduced the peak flows coming in by two million gallons per day. That's a lot. Basin six and seven, the anticipated reduction, this is going to be completed winter twenty twenty three, another one point two million gallons per day for a total peak flow reduction of about three point two. We are going through a very extensive process. We're installing rain gauges throughout the Sandy system, flow monitoring. We're working very closely with DEQ and EPA on this. And there's going to be a very, very rigorous data collection and model validation period to confirm this reduction of flows. And we're anticipating on getting that depending on when the the data collection stops, spring, I would say late spring twenty twenty three. In addition, we are going to start a capacity management and oper- operation and maintenance program. Essentially, what it, it makes us keep up on investigating our system. So we'll continuously monitor, we'll smoke test, we'll, you know, make sure that our pipes don't disintegrate again. We're going to keep up on this and keep keep the clean water out of our system. We are also going to be moving forward. We're going to be investigating the remaining basins by twenty twenty five. So probably looking at about two every year for twenty twenty five. Speaking with a lot of our neighboring agencies, ones such as Gresham, they found that doing the C-MOM program, grouting manholes is, I'm getting way into the weeds, but it's, it's very cost effective, very inexpensive, very cost effective. And those are two words that we all like. So number two, the treatment, the replacement and expansion. We are working extremely hard on the immediate needs improvement project. That's to rehab and build some expansion to some bottlenecks and treatment at our existing wastewater treatment plant. It is a very, very difficult time to do this. It's very hard to get vendors to commit to things. There's a lot of variables. But right now we're on target for construction to complete in February twenty twenty three. Stress test. So once the new system is upgraded, completed, all the electronics work only then because we want that system to be as in as best shape as possible, then we're going to undergo a stress test. We're going to be monitoring how the system does beforehand. We're going to push it to the maximum for treating both loads and flows. We're actually starting the development of this plan, which is due at the end of this month. And once that stress test is completed, we'll do the analysis. We'll be working closely with the EPA and DEQ and that will translate to the number of remaining connections we think are at the treatment plant. So it's, it's a long process, a lot of data. In anticipation of that stress test, we also hired some contractors by the name of Water Dude to help us. And we've identified a number of other weak links within our system. We've been placing orders for two hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment, spares, parts, just to shore up our system so that stress test performs as best as possible. We also put out an RFQ for a facility plan amendment and we have selected a firm and are through negotiations. I'm just finalizing the amendment and schedule with DEQ as we speak. And finally, I noticed a little typo there. I am thinking ahead. We do need to move ahead with a program management, which is staff augmentation as well as help as we move forward with expanding the existing treatment plant, moving forward on other parts of our program. We did, we did issue a notice of intent to award for program management services to Stan Tech and I am starting to negotiate with them. It's going to be a dual contract. They will also be helping with our water, our drinking water. As I've mentioned, I I need an RFP written next January as well as helping with funding. This is a long list. I don't have to go through all these things, but they're in the presentation. Oration Basin improvements. The plant has had a very significant bottleneck in terms of the filter, which has caused much of the wet weather violations. This filter, I was out touring the plant, is still not there, but it's supposed to be arriving this month and and will be installed. So it's going to be really, really good to see the results of what that plant can do once that piece of equipment arrives. Keep moving forward. Our owner's rep, Leeway Engineering, did sort of an anticipated results of what we think we're going to be. The green line shows the capacity of the treatment plant. The blue line shows what we think is in our collection system. And so as you can see, we do show that we don't quite have enough capacity at the wastewater treatment plant for some of these higher wet weather flows. But as you see, at the end of twenty twenty two, what we're looking at is more capacity at the treatment plant, which is the blue line. I'm sorry, the green line, higher capacity of the treatment plant, lower peak flows from all the rehab. So you see those, you know, it shows that we have more capacity. So really, really good positive story there. Keep going. And then finally, the new affluent disposal location for over a year now, the city has been working with parametrics as our consultant, collecting data for an MPDS application for Sandy River Outfall. And I'm ready to tell you that this application is ready to submit to DEQ. It's a long and iterative process. DEQ will probably be in review for about a year. We are asking for seven million gallons per day. This would be the equivalent of Class A recycled water. And it is, it's going to be a long process. I'm anticipating from what I've been told, eight years plus or minus to permit and construct the outfall. So this, this is definitely a longer term solution. And the first step is really getting through the DEQ review and seeing what results they say. But we've also made a lot of progress and that's an important next step in our long-term solution.
Yes, can you elaborate on what you mean by what EPA says? What do you, what, what is said? You said as the permit process goes, they will tell us what, it's not like getting a driver's license permit.
No. There's a significant amount of study of our results. They're looking at the wasteload application, the impact to fish health, riverine health. It's a really complicated process because they have to be convinced that the engineering and the scientific and the technical analysis is solid to permit the additional flows. And they will also give us what they think the times of when we could discharge there. I've been told October is a very low flow month. It's unlikely, it's unlikely we would get a year-round permit and it, they will come back with their their calculations of how much flow we think we can go there, what temperature mitigation we would have to do and how long. So it's, it's a, it's a complicated process. It's not done very often. It is very, it is very iterative. There's multiple permits. It's, it's going to be a long process. But just to give that, that timing in place, this is a big milestone and the city has been working towards this for well over a year now. So what's changed since the twenty nineteen facility plan besides everything the world's experienced? No joking aside, the twenty nineteen facility plan looked at many different combinations of collection system rehab as well as treatment plant improvements. And where they landed was rehabilitating only two basins, not all the basins like we're currently doing. And so to sum it up, the twenty nineteen facility plan projected Sandy would have a peak flow of fourteen million gallons per day. However, because we have been through collaboration with DEQ as well as other recommendations, we have done more rehab of the collection system. Our peak flow right now, just with the four basins we've rehabbed, has dropped down to ten point eight MGD. And with our intention of continuing to rehab the additional six basins, we do anticipate that number will sink down. What that means is we need to build less treatment, which will save money. And that is, it's very important in this environment when it's extremely expensive to build.
Question?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, but you know, we're also have all these, you know, developments happening. So help me understand that I get it that we're going to get a little bit more capacity doing, you know, fixing some of the leaks. But we're also getting like double the, double the density on, on our development parcels that are going under development. So how do we accommodate that growth for the next twenty years? And not end up here again?
Well, this facility, I mean, this is a common problem. Facility plans look at projected growth and they make reasonable assumptions of what will happen in the future. But you know, recessions hit, towns don't grow as fast or they grow faster. I mean, to answer your question, the facility plan and the facilities being built are based on population. And so we can tie that to the growth that we see. And so that will help calculate the load that's treat, that's treated. There's units and the treatment at the treatment plant are sized. They have different functions. Some of them just pass the peak flow through and some of them actually treat the load. So and the load is tied to the development. So
We're going to be able to accommodate twenty years worth of growth with this updated two thousand nineteen facility plan?
No. One of the let me summarize what I, I think you're, you're asking. There are, there are a lot of changes and what's really important to us now is we keep moving ahead. The question in, in all of our minds, based on this reduction is do we have to build two plants or could we build one larger plant on property we already own? Reopening the facility plan to restart with the population projections and all the growth would be a multi-year process. And the city spent an awful lot of time planning. We'll be able to tie the population projections to when the growth occurs. But what we're intending to do is basically relook at plans that were looked at in the existing facility plan, but not selected moving forward because they elected to do fewer rehab of collection systems. Does that?
Just a freshening up.
It's just, it's, it's, it's a, it's a modification to show what we've done. We're not reopening it to redo the population growth and projections because that would be it would be a much longer process and we've already invested the time with that facility plan. We're trying to
Is forecasted in the facility.
Have we accurately estimated the growth in the plan we have? Given the double density stuff that
The thing that I know you brought up just a little bit. I'd like to emphasize this is that the three basic rule on the Clackamas River system is also a limiting factor. And I wish I could tell you how many million gallons a day that limit would be on our system. But I do know that the Clackamas River folks, that's where their drinking water is. For those cities like Oregon City, ones that are down on the river there, and I probably say them wrongly, but that is a limiting factor. And even if we could make our input into the Tickle Creek Plant being enough that the Tickle Creek Pack can handle it. The three basic rule limits us from putting so much, whatever that line is of treated sewage into that system so that we have to do something different. There's a lot of pressure for us to go to Sandy River, really. That's the reason why we're
Yeah, it's the, you're exactly right. Tickle Creek is mass load limited. So what it meant is as we've grown, we have to remove more and more and more of the wastewater and eventually it's just not possible to move anymore. So we do need to find an alternate discharge. And yes, you're correct. Going back to the twenty nineteen facilities plan, we, we've talked about this a lot, but the black basically shows what was envisioned. This first phase, Phase One A, which is what we've been working on, is the MPDS permitting for the Sandy River Outfall, collection system rehabilitation of basins two and eight, and the immediate needs wastewater treatment plant project. We've done all these things. Then it said build more treatment at a second treatment plant facility, the East Side Satellite Facility. Construct the new outfall and the new, sorry, the new pipeline and the new outfall. Following that, you would look at rehab of basin six and seven as well, all of this at the same time, continued system, collection system rehab work as well as some additional rehab work at the, at the existing wastewater treatment plants. And based on the direction we've gone with the collection system rehab, other alternatives were looked at in the, in the original facility plan that are more in line with the direction we're going. And that would mean having one, we would expand on the existing site and treat all the wastewater here and then pump over to the outfall. And so a lot of that is what we're looking at at the facility plan amendment, just to confirm that we can do that with the reduced flows. Moving on to the stress test and the facility plan amendment schedule, I have been working on the schedule since we put it together last May. And currently we are right here. We have a negotiated scope. We're ready to bring to council, but it's very important that DEQ concurs with us. So I'm having I, I'm making, I'm collaborating with them and hoping that we'll get resolution to this in the next couple of weeks. As I said, we are anticipating the current construction on the wastewater treatment plant will be done around February of this year. There are variables. There's still There are variables. There still are equipment that could be delayed. And I cannot emphasize this enough. We have to complete the construction on the plant. Everything needs to be arrived and be installed before we do the stress test. So it is in our best interest to do the stress test as quickly as possible, but there are some variables and it is possible that this could shift a month or so. Right now, the schedule shows us forecasting doing this around March. Following that, there'll be a lot of data analysis and a lot of cor- corroboration with DEQ to agree. And we think that the results will be public sometime around May or June. This is the best knowledge we have. And I'm thinking that the facility plan will be, the amendment will be available in June, depending on whether we want the results of the validation of the flow reduction we've received in Basins 2 and 8 and 6 and 7 that may push off the date of the Facility Plan Amendment. So these things are in discussion, but I wanted to show this is the schedule we're working towards. And everybody is working on this with, yeah, diligently. Again, I, I wanted to bring this back to the three pieces, the collections, the treatment, the affluent disposal. So the last two, three years, we've been working on the rehab of Basins 2, 8, 6 and 7. What's coming up in 23 through 25? We'll be investigating the remaining basins. We'll also be doing a very, very diligent analysis confirming the INI reduction we have received in our collection system. That'll happen in spring of 23. Following that, we'll be conducting CMOM as well as pump station upgrades. And we'll continue to maintain that system with a lot of attention going forward so that it doesn't revert to a leaky system. We want to keep it functioning very well. In terms of treatments, we're completing the construction project and the Facility Plan Amendment going into 23 through 25. We're going to be completing the Facility Plan Amendment. And we'll be moving forward in Design Phase 1B. That's going to be the next phase of our wastewater treatment plant improvement. That will be costed out and we will get the best path forward we can for the city. That's going to be dependent on the flows and the reduction that is confirmed that we did achieve here. What we're looking for is we want to build as small a treatment plant as possible. And then I see moving into the construction of Phase 1B in 2026 through 2028. Back to the affluent disposal. We're submitting the Sandy River Outfall NPDS Permit Application for Review. I believe that'll be an iterative process, conversations with DEQ for a year, potentially more. There'll be a very significant public involvement process. Moving forward to get the money to build the outfall, we need to go through a NEPA process, which is completing the environmental permits required before we can apply for the money. Once that money's in, we go through the design process and I see construction going into 2029, potentially 2030. This is all going to be laid out in the Facility Plan Amendment. But from what I know now, I think these are reasonable timeframes to think about short-term, long-term solutions. In terms of program funding, currently we're using a Clean Water SRF loan. This will finish up in winter 2023, along with the completion of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. The loan for the Phase 1A projects is at 20.7 million all in. Clean Water SRF loans currently have better interest rates. And so we applied for a second one in August of 2022 to have that option. We should be hearing that shortly. We were also issued an EPA congressionally directed $1 million grant. I've been working through what to apply that for. We also, thanks to all the work of everyone here, received an ARPA state grant funding for 14.7 million. We just completed the paperwork to start drawing on that. And that is funding the basin work in Basin 6 and 7 as well as the Facility Plan Amendment. And we've reserved funds for more work and rehabilitation at the existing treatment plant. And we're also working on finalizing our WIFIA application. If that is submitted in October, it's about a six-month process to go through all the loan underwriting. And that would be available to draw on April or May of last year. It's, it's a, it's a long process. Interest rates are climbing. Those are projected right now to be 4.5%, which is why we applied for the WIFIA loan because we're trying to put together the best funding package we can. In terms of public engagement, Jeff handles much of that brilliantly, I think. Clean Water Wednesdays, Communication Focus. There was a recent Sandy Clean Waters overview video of a lot of the work, including the installation and work at the Eration Basin and highlighting the success of the info, influen- infiltration work as well as Facility Plan Amendment talking points. There definitely have been a lot of questions about what we plan to do near term, long term. And then upcoming council action items to wrap it up. We will have a Clean Water SRF Loan Amendment Authorization coming soon, fall of 2020, fall. Leeway Owners Rep Services are needed to take us through the stress test. We've known that since the spring. But I do need to bring an amendment before you for their services. The WIFIA Loan Master Agreement, the approval of the KJ Facility Plan Amendment Contract. And I think early winter, it will be the approval of the StanTech Program Management Contract. Because I'm in negotiations with them right now. And that's what I have.
Do you have any idea of the cost on this last slide? Is that like additional money that we, you know, like additional costs than what we've already kind of been told about?
No, these are, these are included within our budgets.
So the StanTech thing was always planned?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good job.
You talked about getting the pollution discharge permit. Commit, but the investigation all completed or finished up now and delivering it to DEQ here this sometime shortly. Will the public be able to see some of that information or all of it? And what timeframe do you think?
That's a really good question. What I know is that DEQ will review it. And when they deign it to be complete, then it will be available to the public. It's been a collaborative process, getting a lot of the sample and the data needed, and we've had to lean on DEQ. So I, I'm not sure, two months, maybe two, three months?
There's a lot of interest in that slide and kind of discharging we're talking about and all those kinds of things. So I could get that out there when it did lots of publicity for it?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Moving ahead in our agenda, report from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just keep it pretty brief tonight. Hopefully check your email for the LOC conference itinerary we put together with information, your reservations and the tourist plan for the Ben Parks. So looking forward to that. Should be a good chance to get educated and spend some time with your colleagues. Brief up then, 362nd, the crews were able to complete the work on the culvert during the window. So it's still on schedule and moving along. And so I think we were helped out by the extended summer here in whole. Want to thank staff and council for all the work and participation on Future Fest, which was kind of a new twist on public engagement. I think we had a pretty good turnout, at least over 40 people that registered. And I think there was more than that in attendance and lots of people brought their kids too, which was great to see. I think I kind of lost my voice like Rich for a couple of days shouting in that, in that, in whippersnappers, trying to talk. But I think we got some great input and it was a great event. So thanks to staff and our consultant team for, for putting that together. I had shared some photos and I think Jenny mentioned this too with our water system during the work session. I think, well, if summer continues here in October, if we can scramble and do it, I think it would be very beneficial for council to do, to, to tour our, our water sites. I had not been up to the springs and, and seen kind of the, the old intake. And then also we, we hiked up to the, the intake at Alder Creek too. It's impressive, but also eye opening just how old our water facilities are and how much investment they need to kind of bring them up and make sure that they're going to be stable for the long term. But it's also just fun to get out and see the, it's actually pretty unique that Sandy has water sources that, you know, are miles away up in these pristine environments with great tasting water that's conveyed down to the city. So I would, I would recommend finding time to be able to tour those sites and we can help arrange for that. And that's it.
Thank you.
Don. I heard from you enough, you know, hear from you enough in the next two, three days. Carl. Just a couple of things and I'll be quick to. Our National B City sign is up and put together up there at the beginning of the city. So I'm really pleased to see that happening. And hopefully we can get the other one side of the city up as well as soon as we can. So that's kind of cool. See that's going on. It's the time of the year when it's, everybody's starting to think about wintertime. Hopefully it'll happen. But this is a good time to be thinking about our ditches. Ditches in our community are where we get a lot of diversity of the animals, the insects, the things that need some sort of protection when they have to overwinter. It could time to put the message out. It'd be great to see, and I would encourage people not to mow your ditches. Leave those things that are, have some places for animals to hide. These are the natural ones, not the feral ones or the, some of the other things that we have from our houses and such. But it's a great time to be able to keep that in our minds. I do have a question. And I know I brought it up before, but this is not the islands. This is the barricades that Oda seem to be just not doing anything. And particular, there's the one there at Scales and Rocker. And some of them got ran over. And some of them are being knocked over. Some of them are being pushed. Maybe it's because of.
Poor Jordan had to field some emails for me regarding those things.
We were told that they need to stay up until the project is complete.
So even though the ones I'm looking at, they have some asphalt in them and I'm assuming that's not complete.
Well, yeah, because then they come back as you saw.
Concrete.
Last week, yeah, either concrete or they're keeping them up until they even put in the landscaping too.
Yeah, I, I'm seeing people knock them over and I'm seeing people pretty disgusted and some of them are kind of dangerous. There's one that's right in front of my office. Looks like it's, I don't know what you call it. It's a mess, junkyard. And I think that one is part of that is our Sandy Net stuff that's keeping that from.
On that one.
That one. Yeah, I was told that there's a vault in there that Sandy Net needed to be part of. And maybe that's what that is, but it, it really is a danger. Kids play with those things, jump around them and knock them over. We should be doing true courage, you'll got to kind of
Yeah.
Come to the conclusion. Other than that, I'm, I'm seeing concrete for the first time ever between the police and this the loop. Just, it's just amazing. Great. Although it's dangerous, this can be my intersection of Lang and Sand and Highway 26. Especially when they narrow down the number of lanes, it's just all the red barricades and all the traffic and all the trucks and all the things that are in and out of that lines. I'm amazed we haven't got more accidents there. Anyway.
The library board met last month and they're actually meeting. So I'll probably try to zoom in this week. And the Hoodland representative, one of the Hoodland representatives is proposing that the county kind of helped build a new library up at Hoodland slash Community Center. So it's kind of an interesting concept. I'm not sure it's got legs because yeah, because that costs a lot of money. But anyways, that's something she's pursuing and I'll report back on that when I have more information. On another note, and it just jumped on my head. Oh, I know. I thought, thank you very much for the Future Fest. It was very well done. A lot of great information shared with folks. And one of the things that was a kind of an aha moment for me was the talking to the transportation planner for your TSP. We were just asking about speed limits on things like Bluff Road and, and other places. And talked about reducing speed limits on some of the roads like 4, 211. That's now ours. And she said that it was possible for us to reduce the speed limits for all residential streets. There's all city streets are residential streets. And we was getting clarification from her to 25 miles per hour, which would be kind of, you know, you don't have to go one road by road. You can just do a blanket thing like that, which seemed pretty efficient and needed. So anyways, just something to consider. And I, it was kind of exciting to hear that. But I appreciate all the work that went into Future Fest and learned a lot. Thanks.
I'm Rich.
I'm also going to pass tonight.
Thank you, sir. And Lori. Sorry, you're sick, Rich.
Yeah, I just would like to commend staff for Future Fest. For those of you didn't get the opportunity to attend, it was a really good public outreach. I thought really well attended, great choice in facilities. People came with some really good questions. There was a lot of just really good engagement. I took a lot of screenshots of boards that they had up, so. Very well put together. And I hopefully will do some, do some similar things because it's a great opportunity to just talk to people, so.
Yeah, I, I didn't make it to Future Fest. As I said, what I want, one of the things I want to do is spend time with the family. So I got to watch my son run varsity as a freshman, cross country that day during that time. So that was pretty special. But we did have our economic development committee meet the day before with the consultants. So kind of got a future, future fest in some ways. It wasn't the same. I, I get that. Bill Hans was there too. And so talk about a dedicated person. He's at every one of our meetings. And then again, the next day, and then he runs a business as well. But anyways, so that was good for us to hear, go through their plan. But we also had a presentation from our Clackamas County and the early childhood side of things. And talking about how, as we all know, we have a care desert in our community. We have for a while and, and just how, how precious that is. And, and so I know before this council was formed, that there was someone on the previous council who was in that field as well. It was a very big advocate for it. And I think it'd be wise to have a work session on that again in the future. Probably don't have one in the, in time in the near future, but as in before I'm off council. But it would be good to, to do that. And, and some of the things that they shared with us at that point, time is the policies we changed in the past to help encourage daycare from our policies to development code and that type of thing have been used otherwise. It, they had a slide of people that were, I don't know what we call sponsoring or part of the invested in that. And I'd love to see Sandy, you know, if the council all decides to do so, be part of that. And then, and for hearing, hearing them, I think that's, it's, there's many, many reasons why we'd want to do that as a community. To do that, but that will probably be after I'm off the council, but highly recommend having that. But other than that, just want to commend staff on a very hard night tonight. It's not easy to hear. And, but yet all the work that is done in it's, I realize that.
Thank you. A heavy night, hard night, but an important night for our community. And thank you to staff for all of the work and everything that went into this evening and, and answering the questions in the elegant way that you did. So thank you for that. I also thank you for Future Fest. Those comments have been made. It was, it was awesome, very well attended. And I know there's a lot of work that goes into that. So thank you. Also, I was at that economic development meeting and about the childcare facilities, you know, especially the tenant improvement program, you know, being extended to be able to help some of these childcare facilities come online. It was very important and pretty awesome. So with that, just want to be quick tonight. Remember, stick around. We have an executive session for, for those of us that have to attend. Afterwards, with that, thank you, everybody.